Welcome to Salina Media Connections 2019 City Commission Interviews with Candidates. Today, we are visiting with James Bowden. James, welcome.
Thank you.
To get started, James, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself, what you do, what you've been doing in the past, et cetera?
Sure. I grew up in Salina, Kansas. I went to Salina Central High School. I attended Bethany College and achieved a chemistry degree. And after Bethany, I did some travel abroad. I went to Chile. And after that, I continued my career as a chemist at a pharmaceutical manufacturing plant. And then after that, I went to the Peace Corps for two years in Panama. And upon returning home from Panama, I started my next step of my career at the Land Institute here in Salina.
So that sounds like kind of a diversified, broad background for a young guy like you.
Yeah, it sure is. I do a lot of things, including help my family on the farm. So we have a farm near Gypsum, Kansas, and my dad and I are out there most days.
So tell us why you're running for City Commissioner.
Well, I see a lot of potential in Salina. I think Salina is, I mean, this is where I grew up, and I see the best parts of it. And I really want to highlight the best parts of Salina and bring those out. I think there's a lot of people that have a lot of negative sentiment in this area surrounding Salina. And that's something that is there, but it's the part of Salina that we can rise above and find, really highlight the best parts, the ones that...
Well, let me ask you this. What part of your background do you think is going to provide you the most value? You're the youngest candidate that's running here. You've done all these different things.
I think the thing that helps me as the youngest candidate is perspective. And not only perspective as a young candidate, because I do have a perspective that's different from the rest of the commissioners already on the commission and as well as the other candidates running, but as well, the thing that... The thing that my perspective, that I have as a perspective is that I'm also well-traveled. I've also been around. I have a farming background as well as have lived in the city for years. I've taken a chance and lived in a community that doesn't speak the same language as me. So I've had to adapt to their way of life and understand what makes them tick and what positive things can be done in their community. So I want to bring that back to Salina and share that.
So what was that like?
It was hard. It's really hard going into a situation that you don't necessarily understand, but you have to learn. You have to find ways to connect with the people and then show them that you're there for the common good, trying to make a difference in their community. And that's what I want to do in Salina. I don't necessarily know everything there is to know, and no one really can. But what I am here to do is listen to what the people are saying and trying and reflect or hear what they say and reflect back to them what they want.
Listening is an important skill, so it's good to hear you make comment about that. You mentioned perspective, so I'm going to ask you some questions about perspective. These are a little bit more difficult, but they're the things that people are talking about now. And one of them is Salina has budget challenges. So what part of the budget do you support strongly and what part of the budget are you less supportive of?
I support the budget where the resources go to the majority of Salinans. If it's to infrastructure, if it's to things that can benefit the majority of the community, I support it. I would, I don't necessarily support things that don't benefit everyone. I have a hard time supporting the tennis complex, specifically because I don't know that it has the support that would make it beneficial to everyone. The sports, the baseball stadium, on the other hand, I do believe brings a lot of people to the community. I think there's a lot of support for it, and I do support that. And I know there's discussions of the best way to fund it, but if we can somehow find a balance and fund it appropriately, I support it.
Housing is one of the main issues in the community today. How should we go about addressing some of the housing issues we have?
Well, I think we've been expanding too much on the outskirts of town. I think we're moving into farmland. I think we're building houses that normal Salina people cannot afford. And I think we need to refocus on the center of town, bring up some of these neighborhoods that are in disrepair and get them back to a standard that's acceptable for our community. There's a lot of, again, a lot of potential with Salina. And with the amount of neighborhoods that need repair, I think we've got to start focusing back in on the whole of Salina. We're not growing as a community like we could be. And so we need to make sure that what we have right now is quality, so that in the future, if we do decide to grow, we can grow from the inside out instead of growing on the outside and falling short in the middle.
How do you feel about little houses?
I lived in a little house for two years. In fact, I live in an apartment now. So I think little houses are great. I think it's kind of a new idea. And if we were to put that in Salina, I think there'd be interest in it. In fact, I'm interested in it right now. So I support it fully.
So what is a little house?
Well, it's a house that, there's really minimal, there's minimal space, minimal footprint. And you can fit so many more units into a plot than you would be able to a house that we typically have here in Salina. The, one of the benefits of a little house is utilities are so much cheaper. You don't use near the utilities that you would with some of the 2, 3, 4,000 square feet houses that are down here right now. And so I support it. Whatever makes life easier for the rest of Salina, I'm for it.
So you mentioned earlier something about growth and population. Salina's population's been declining, hasn't it?
That's true.
What should we do about this?
Well, I think that there's two things that we have to do with it. And I've been using this analogy over and over again, and I think it's a good one. I was speaking with a former professor of mine about what makes a good brewery. And he said that, you know, people come for the beer, but they stay for the food. And so when I think about Salina in terms of a brewery, I think the beer would be high-paying jobs, jobs that can support, can support a normal family doing, just giving a living wage. And the food of Salina would be the culture. We have to encourage a healthy community culture, engagement, connection between one another, neighbors. And I think with both good jobs and a good culture, we can invite people to Salina and they'll want to stay.
So when you become City Commissioner, how are you going to make that happen?
Well, I'd like to continue looking for more jobs that pay in the $40,000-plus range. With the One Vision company coming in with the airplanes, I think that's amazing for our community, and that's going to help a lot. And we're also going to need to think about how, not only do we encourage more people to come in, but how do we support the people that are already here? What can we do to get these people to a living wage and get them where they need to be so they can support, they can support other areas of our community locally and otherwise?
Let's talk about youth and what will, I mean, you mentioned some, a list of some good topics that would be attractive in relation to staying in Salina. What do we need to do to keep more young people here?
We got to have, we got to have those cultural events. We got to encourage engagement. So when I, when I see things like Feast on the Fay or the multiple pub crawls going on downtown, or the River Festival, these are all things that people love to go to. And it's not just, it's not just the young or the old or the rich or the poor. It's everyone. Everyone's there. And so the more we encourage these events and are open to allowing things like this to happen, I think the more people will stay around this area.
So when I moved here in the 1980s as a young person, the discussion was about building the mall versus downtown.
Yeah.
Now, we're talking about downtown. How do you feel about downtown?
I feel great about downtown. I think that it has the culture. I think in the 80s, that's what, that's where the culture was. People wanted to go to the mall. People, that's where, that's where the movement was. So you have to really follow the movement. And I think right now, there's a huge movement in the downtown area. And I mean, it's creating a spark. People are excited about it, and I'm excited about it.
So what's driving that?
I, I think it's just people wanting something to be excited about. I think that it's a very grassroots movement in downtown. People, it's local. People want it. It's your neighbor. It's not, it's not some company from Kansas City or elsewhere that's come in as a chain and has just bought something up. These are all local residents that want to see Salina be prosperous and see economic development in their hometown. So I'm, that's what I like about it. It's this grassroots movement.
So tell me your philosophy on economic development.
You want to elaborate?
What, there are a lot of communities fighting for the same jobs and that kind of thing. And we've got a good group of people that are leading our EcoDevo projects here. What's going to cause, what's going to set Salina apart from these other communities that are competing for the same base of employers with an employee base that's not real large?
All right. We need to encourage higher wages. We need to get people paid so that they can support themselves. And when other communities see that our citizens are getting what they deserve, then they'll come to Salina because they know this is where they can be prosperous. I worry about the number of free and reduced lunches in the schools, which is reflective of the type of wages that are being paid in Salina. So whatever we can do to get the most number of people a higher wage, whether it be bringing new jobs in or finding ways to competitively raise salaries, I think that's where we're at.
How do you feel about entrepreneurship?
I love it. I love seeing...
That's kind of a farm trend, isn't it?
Well, I think so. We got to find a way to make some money somewhere. And so I'm all about entrepreneurs, small businesses, trying to make some money. I love the downtown because that's what it is. They're entrepreneurs and they're being resourceful. I love the creativity that comes with being an entrepreneur.
So there's kind of a lack of entrepreneurs in general. What do we need to do to create more entrepreneurship in young people?
Well, I don't think there's a lack of entrepreneurs. I think there's a lack of support. I think that people don't, you know, they love the idea of the young entrepreneur and getting out there and being successful. But when it comes down to where they spend their dollars here in Salina, it hasn't been locally. It's been with a lot of the chain stores, restaurants. And we need to change as a community. We need to support the locals as much as we can so that, so that we can have young entrepreneurs. And they don't feel like it's hopeless to start a business because inevitably they'll fail. Because this is, we can do this. We can do this. We are a community of almost 50,000 people. We can, we can support our local businesses.
So the Kaufman Foundation in Kansas City, their research shows that the two groups of entrepreneurs that are growing the fastest are women and immigrants.
That's great. Bring it on.
Is there anything more we can do to encourage more of that with women and immigrants?
When, when we see women and immigrants getting out there and trying to be successful, we have to support them. And whether it's providing the social infrastructure or just the having a path for them, I think that's important. Whatever, whatever there is, I'm ready to support it.
So you're involved with coworking space at the Innovation Foundation. Is that true?
That's true.
Tell us, tell us a little bit about your involvement there.
So Mary Landis came in, and she had been wanting to start this coworking space at the Salina Innovation Foundation for a while. And where I came into the picture, I was participating in Leadership Salina this last fall, and we were looking for a project. And we found the project in supporting the development of this coworking space. Myself, along with several others, did the best we could trying to make some connections and get some funding for the space. And finally, it's coming together, and the space is open to anybody that needs a work area apart from their house or wherever they work. And if they, you know, if you can't afford a building or a regular office space, we've provided the space that's affordable to most people. So...
That sounds exciting.
It is. It is exciting.
So what other kinds of ventures are you involved with?
Oh, you name it, I'm involved with it. Right now, I'm on the board of Prairieland Market and also the Local Food Works Foundation. So we are doing our best to support the local food system, whatever it may be, whether it's with chefs or with producers or consumers. If we can help support that, and right now, we're supporting it through a local grant that's funded through Feast on the Fay, we're doing it. So last year, we helped Tyler Gallagher at Seraphim Bread get an awning, as well as helped the Country Home Berries get a berry washer. These are all things that, that, you know, just having a little bit of help helps them out. And so the final thing that, and the biggest portion of our fund that we gave out was for advertising for the winter farmers market. So...
So earlier, you said that you'd studied chemistry at Bethany College. So what's going, what's going on with chemistry now?
Well, you know, a lot of people complain that they don't use their degree. And I can honestly say I use my degree. I, and I view, I, in fact, use or have incorporated a little bit of every part of my life into my new job at the Land Institute. I guess not new, really. I've been there for three years. But I'm in the lab daily. I'm also farming, collecting samples and setting up experiments in the field. We have guests from all over the world that come in, and so I get a chance to speak Spanish with them or just learn about their culture and where they're from and really bring that back and try to intertwine it into our own community if I can. So...
So are there any other languages besides Spanish that you speak?
Oh, let's see.
I'm going to ask you to invite the Spanish listeners to vote for you here.
Okay. Bueno. Soy James Bowden. Soy de Salina. Si quieres un hombre que puede comunicar con usted y escuchar sus sugerencias y las cosas muy importantes, ustedes, por favor, votar para mí y digan a sus amigos que necesiten votar también. Gracias.
That was good.
Thanks.
Another question I have here for you is, and you've kind of answered it already. Give us your vision of, for Salina.
My vision for Salina is that people come here and immediately they're, they feel welcome. And I think that's already true. But once they're here, the community welcomes them in like a family member. And we'll do whatever it takes to support them and make sure that they're prosperous within our own community. And I think that's an achievable goal. And we just need to take some time and reflect on the culture that we currently have and how we can improve on that to be welcoming on a long-term basis for everyone.
So to follow up on that, there's been discussion, and I know you and I've attended some of the same meetings, about branding for Salina.
Yeah.
What's Salina's brand? What should it be?
Salina's brand should be something that reflects what the community portrays, what the community wants. Lindberg is Little Sweden. Abilene's kind of a cow town. Everywhere has its own identity, and I, I think we need to start reflecting on what is Salina's identity. I think we, we like cars here in Salina, you know? We, we work with our hands. We're people that, that want to get things done. And so whatever the slogan that comes out of branding for Salina, it needs to reflect what Salina actually is and wants. So...
Salina has kind of an income gap between different segments of the town and people. You mentioned raising the wages, but comment on that if you will.
Well, there's a growing income gap across the United States. The super wealthy and then people trying to make ends meet. And I, I'm concerned that even if people are getting by with some of the lower-paying jobs, there are certain things that aren't being taken into account. And one of those things is saving for retirement. Why, you know, yes, you can, you can cut out your Netflix and you can, you can eat on the cheap and do all these things. But if you're just getting by, then what are you going to do when you're 67 now and haven't saved anything? And so we need to encourage employment that pays enough that people can save. And if we can also encourage opportunities to teach people how to save so that even if they do earn a living wage, that they're not spending it on frivolous things. So I, that's one of the important things for me, making sure that people are setting themselves up for success in the future.
So it sounds like that means being a little more frugal. As a City Commissioner, would you be frugal?
I think frugality is an asset. The finding ways to pay for things that we want and not, not paying for things that, you know, we need to really sit down, sit down and think about what we're putting our money towards and how that's going to, what the longevity of that is. What, how, what are we going to have in the future with that?
So are there any questions that you were anticipating that I didn't ask?
Oh, I don't know. Let's go. If you have any more.
We could probably go on for quite a while.
Sure.
But you're a young voice.
True.
And so I'm going to give you an opportunity to look into the camera.
Okay.
And tell the electorate why they should support you.
Sure. I am a young voice, and that's okay. The amount of, or all of, all of the candidates that are running have Salina's best interests in mind. But the thing is with... Sorry. All of Salina... Shoot. Let me start over.
Go ahead.
So as a young candidate, I care about Salina just as much as any of the other candidates. But what we have to ask ourselves as the ones that are going to inherit Salina is, are we okay with someone making a decision about our future without our input? And if that's okay, then that's okay. But I can tell you that we have a different perspective and... and different interests and different viewpoints than people that are 10, 20, and 30 years older than us. So we have to make those known so that when we do inherit Salina, that's somewhere we want to be.
James, thank you very much.
Thanks, great.